Good afternoon. Let's get the meeting to order. We'll call the town hall meeting to order, boys, the town hall. Good afternoon. We're gonna call the meeting to order. Today is Stockton Unified District Town Hall Meeting, location Artic Coleman, Junior Administration Complex, 56 South Lincoln Street, Stockton, California 95203. This is the room room, 5:30 PM. Call the meeting to order. Thank you. Item 122, roll call taken by Abby. Back to you, Abby.
President Cecilia Mendez.
Present.
Vice President Zulawetta.
Present.
Trustee McBrien.
Present.
Thank you. Back to you, President Mendez.
Thank you, Abby. Now we have item 1.3, Public Comments Regarding the 2021-2022 San Joaquin Grand Jury Report, Case Number 0121. Now, I would like to introduce Dr. Tracy Miller, Inter-Superintendente. Welcome for announcements. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Tracy Miller. I am four days on the job. And I see some faces in from community and faces within Stockton Unified that are very familiar and some of you not so familiar, but I look forward to getting to know those of you that I have not had the pleasure of meeting yet. So just want to lay, just lay some groundwork here for tonight. This town hall is from 5:30 to 7:30, so we will end it at 7:30. And really, the purpose of tonight's meeting, this town hall, is for this panel here and leadership here is for us to listen. And we are going to actively listen to what your concerns are. And so we will be listening and I will be feverishly taking notes. And then once we hear what those issues and concerns are, then we will circle back at other town halls. So there will be town hall meetings from me, not just regarding the grand jury report, but also other topics in Stockton Unified that are of concern for our community stakeholders. So with that, just want to lay out a few little ground rules that was advertised for this town hall. And that is, is that there is one town hall card per person. So if you have something you would like to say, you have one card per person. And there is going to be one public comment at a time. And individuals may speak only when recognized. And so I think it's super important, something I want to remind all of us about, is the beautiful thing is that we live in a country where free speech, freedom of the press, is something that we hold sacred. And that we want to make sure the folks that are up there speaking have the opportunity to speak. And there may be some things that you may, may spark some emotion. You may be in agreement, you may be in disagreement, but that we would not interrupt those folks and give them the right to have three minutes uninterrupted. Oh, sorry. And so I'm just gonna ask you to consider the community here and that emotions could get high, but we want to make sure that this is a, a meeting where again, the board, the district leadership, that we are able to listen. All, all ears open, eyes open, and that we are respectful of the folks that are speaking at the comments, at the podium, and that we don't interrupt. And we don't, we don't cause folks in this room to actually feel uncomfortable and unsafe in this place or anxieties high because of the fact that this is supposed to be a sacred place, right? And we want to make sure that everyone in this room is treated with respect. And everyone in this room has the opportunity to have their voice heard. So I'm gonna ask each of us to just remember that we are here for our students. We are here for our stakeholders. And we want to make sure that people want to comment, that they have a forum in which they can do that, where they're not going to be ridiculed and they're going to be able to say what they need to say because that is our First Amendment right. So with that, I will pass it back to Madam President.
Thank you so much, Mrs. Tracy Miller, and thank you for arranging this. And I would like to welcome everybody. Thank you. This is a free space. And I'm very happy that you are here. This is a great building, Mr. Coleman Building. We are very proud of him. And now we're gonna pass it to Christina. It will announce the town hall comments card. Back to you, Christina. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President. We currently have four public comment cards. The first public comment will be done by Mr. Tony Morales.
Meeting possible. I have a tendency to ramble, so my comments will be short. Future meetings should be considered for community input. A process for conducting these meetings could include small group interactions with respective area board members. An action plan could be generated to be acted upon. The Stockton Unified School District is an awesome, dynamic, diverse educational complex. It is now under tremendous scrutiny as a result of two scathing and scary grand jury reports. Scary because it is a, it is possible that Stockton Unified School District be determined by the state to go into receivership and be administered by the San Joaquin County Office of Education. I am anticipating the district and board's responses to the grand jury findings. Let's talk about change, specifically about the process for selecting a long-term superintendent. Past superintendent appointments, for the most part, have been miserable, has been a miserable failure. Failures. We can shake our head, blame others, keep kicking a dead horse, moving chairs around the deck of the Titanic, and still get the same results. The superintendent selection process needs to change. It means the district administrators need to research and examine what worked and what didn't work and why. And do some measurable work to come up with a new and improved process. The board member should be involved and guided by the changes. My thoughts about selecting a new superintendent must have a strong leadership skills, be a proven effective organizational change agent, can create a team learning environment, can lead by demonstrating a work ethic of mutual respect and trust, be skilled at building a collective sense of identity and fundamental purpose. I think Stockton Unified School District has many honest, hardworking people. It is reflected in their relationships with students, colleagues, and community. They, there are outstanding accomplishments by students and staff throughout Stockton Unified School District. Sad to say, there are also people who poison the well we all drink from, but that's another whole ballgame. I close with these questions. How will the new board members be transitioned, ready to go on their first day? Will this town hall meeting be described later as, after all, there was said and done, more was said than done? And how might the Stockton Unified School District recruit future board candidates? Thank you for your attention.
Thank you.
The next public comment will be from Ms. Brenda Vasquez.
Good evening, board members. The reason I'm here today is coming back from Mr. Tolliver's days when schools are being told, no, you're gonna become a boys' or a girls' school. And helping the committees that I was faithfully with, we turned it to a charter school. We had a great board member at that time that was really, really working hard for our charter school. It's lacking in that area now. I have a Hamilton student that has autism. He's being bullied every day. We need to have board members that are gonna be on task, that are gonna pay attention to what needs to be done, not bringing people into the schools, asking a student, oh, I know your dad, where was he from? Me and him used to have beef. So you know, we need people in there like you four sitting up there that have done a lot. When you see people trying to use, I understand that there's the grand jury report, but when you see people trying to use that to just, let's use that to defund police, to get rid of certain people in office or in a job title, that's the wrong reasons. Why aren't you working with these people to make a better place for our students? Quit worrying about you and worry about them. They come first out of everything. So if anybody has any questions for me, please come and ask the question because I will give you an answer. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
The next public comment is from Victor Sucho.
Hearing about this for the first time kind of upset me. I was a delinquent when I was in school. I used to pick on people. And I was a bully too. So even with the officers in school, they helped out and straightened me out. And honestly, I wouldn't recommend it on anybody. And the fact that now programs are gonna be shut down, I was definitely one of those students that had issues reading. And for that program to be cut, my daughter has issues reading. My daughter's, what is it? I forget the word for it, but she has issues reading. And just for one of those programs to be closed down, for her not to have that, especially officers being kicked out of school, I want my kids protected unlike other kids. I had that issue and I do apologize, but still, I don't even know. This is irritating for any type of police officer or teacher to be registered with a firearm inside of a school where a student can get to it. I would rather it be safe, my kids to be safe with an officer in the school. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next public comment is from Michelle Menos.
Hi, good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to comment on the grand jury findings. I'm a Stockton area educator of 21 years and an instructional coach for SUSD, parent and grandparent. I'm commenting out of concern for my students and fellow educators. I was relieved to read the grand jury reports and see that their findings validate what we have seen in recent years, the dysfunction of the board. This board has caused low morale across the district. In a time where there is a nationwide educator crisis and shortage, we have had to endure and attempt to function in a dysfunctional, broken machine. And I applaud those who remain. I was relieved to have a grand jury validate in the 2021 report what we witnessed in board meetings. This board's decisions and behaviors did not have the best interest of children, teachers, and administrators at the forefront. I believe that before an issue can get better, the issue must first be recognized. Has the board heard what SUSD employees, your constituents, your students, and now two grand jury reports are telling you? Do you recognize that your behavior and decisions have led to overall low morale of your employees and chased many talented people to neighboring districts or out of the profession altogether? Do you see how your decisions affect the classrooms and the future of our children as well as the city as a whole? How do you plan to reengage all your stakeholders and work collaboratively to raise the value of the education our children are receiving? Thank you.
Thank you.
Next public comment is from Rafael Cordoza.
Hey, how you guys doing? First off, let me start off. My last time I was at a meeting here, I kind of went off and went a little bit. Yeah, Karen, they call it. And I want to apologize to anybody that was here, anybody that was witness to that. That is not my nominal demeanor, but I noticed that the frustration that I have is not just myself. I hear you guys, 11 months ago, these guys received the same type of report. Nobody did anything, nothing changed. I see a lot of people up, they need to recognize this and they need to hear this and they need, they know everything. They already know all this stuff that we're addressing to them, everything on the grand jury report, everybody knows. Everybody knows. These guys are, are, are these guys are, are what I say, I say, when I say fibular, I mean, these guys are not being straight with us now. They're not telling us the truth on why Ramirez left. They're telling us to take care of his elderly parents. They're not telling us the truth on a lot of the Alicia and Naga stuff, please, I'm sorry, they'd be even bring you up here. They're doing the same thing. This is just another school board meeting. They're just looking at us with their heads cocked to one side. You know, my grandma used to make a, a, a comment to me when I would do something that was not right. And what that translates to in English is I, my little guy, how dumb, basically. And I can think of nothing better to say at this point in time than gafandecos. I have no other choice but to say this. These people, there's only two people, again, up there, two. Last time I said it was just one. There's only two people up there and I'm disappointed not to see him here right now. And right, they're new. They don't have no responsibility for the stuff that has transpired in the past. How much time I got? For the stuff that has transpired in the past, they, we still have time to mold them. And they will be good board members. The other ones are lost. Where are they at? How many seats up there are empty? This is how much they're concerned about us and our kids. I keep hearing the term stakeholder. My kids, not money. My kid's in education. My kid's a human being. You can have a stakeholder thing all you want. $7.50 for a motel room. That's not counting their food expenditures, their car rentals, and whatever else that they're gonna go up there in San Diego on. And they don't care what we say. They're gonna go regardless of what we say. Expedia.com comment, Motel Six, they're gonna spend every bit of the money that they possibly can. Why not? Why not? National average per kid, per student spent is $19,500, national average. Here in Stockton, California, we spend $15,000 per kid. We're robbing our children of $5,000. Where is that money going? Where is that money going? Why aren't we matching the national average to take care of our children? Please, you guys, when November hits, do the right thing. Get rid of these guys.
Thank you. Thank you.
Go from there.
Thank you.
Madam President, we do not have any more public comment cards.
No more? Well, we like everybody for coming.
That's it? That's it?
Anybody for coming? Excuse me?
Why can't you respond? You guys got like over an hour.
We like to thank everybody for coming. The meeting is adjourned.
Wait to get rid of that one and the other.
You, you have a card?
I can't wait. I can't.
You have a card? Thank you.
Everybody vote right.
Thank you. Thank you, please.
The meeting's over, you said?
We have a child, a young man who wants to speak up in the microphone.
The next comment card is from David Sankay.
I just think it's a bit premature to end the meeting as people are still taking their time to think about their comments and fill them out. Even if they need some time to think about what they have to say, I just think that holding this meeting to be open until 7:30 was the expectation that you put into the public. It, the flyer said from 5:30 to 7:30 PM, even if there are no comments being read out at the moment, this meeting should still be open for that sort of discussion. So please, I would ask if there is hang time, such as, but a minute ago where somebody did not submit a comment card in time, that we at least give some time for people to formulate their thoughts, think about what's being said at them and be able to articulate what they want to say. And forgive me if I'm, and I expect to read my comment this early, but I was just like, okay, wait, let's get my comment out there so we can pull in some time from people. So I totally encourage the public here to submit a comment card, articulate what they're gonna say. In terms of the grand jury report, I do want to tie it back to that because I do have two minutes left. I just hope that this year that we gain a stronger, more diligent response to this grand jury report. There's recommendations and findings in there that sometimes make us look bad. And sometimes, when I was a student in high school, I often turned in assignments that weren't up to par. And when my teacher critiqued it, I was, I would go back to the drawing board, don't take it personally, and understand that it wasn't a fault of my own, it was a fault of my work. And that my work does not necessarily dictate who I am as a person. And I can go forward and still work with what I have in order to produce better work in the future. What I see right now is that we're at a crossroads. We have two grand jury reports that have negatively painted this district for the right reasons. It is an honest critique of our district. It, it brings in numbers and statistics that haven't been brought up before. And of course, sometimes when we're at the podium, when we're at the dais, we're sitting down doing the work day in, day out, I understand that it hurts to say, hey, you didn't do enough, you didn't do a good enough job. And that's okay. Because at the end of the day, it's not about our egos or what we do when we're elected in these positions or we're hired or appointed. It's about the fact is, is that we aren't doing enough right now. We've been, we've been given a failing test score. And in the future, other tests will come up, other assignments will come up. With that, we should take every step forward to listen to our critiques and demands. The public here is your teacher. We're the ones that elected you. We're the ones that are here to support you. And although we don't agree on a lot of things, we don't necessarily see eye to eye, there is one thing that we all can agree on, that SUSD serves its students and its community. And when our students are better prepared to go to college, to enter trade school, to enter the workforce, we get a stronger community. Stockton is a fragile city. It's been through a lot these past two years. It's been through a lot for its whole history. And at this point, SUSD has a choice. And I believe that hearing the public here is a good first step. And I hope we continue to do that. And I encourage everybody here to leave a comment.
Thank you. To you, Christina.
The next public comment is from Donna Maripau.
Good evening, everyone. I would like to thank everyone for the opportunity to speak. I was not prepared either for my comment, but I think it's important to echo some of the statistics that have came out and that are very important to discuss. Overall, there are 22% of SUSD students that do not graduate. That is almost one out of every four students. In math, more than 90% of Stockton students are one or more years below grade level. 85% of students in reading are one or more years' grade level behind. Two-thirds of students do not read proficiently by the fourth grade and are likely to do jail time as well. There's a lack of transparency within our school board. School board meeting notes are, notes are approved and posted online as they should be. However, not all of them are posted online. It's difficult for parents to have to work who have family obligations to even access these and not including those who don't even have internet access. There is also a lack of public discussion on agenda items as well. It gives the appearance of this board meeting having a closed door and again, not being transparent with the public. The lack of certified translators at board meetings is a problem as well too. A lot of our students are Spanish-speaking first and a lot of their parents are Spanish-speaking only. So this is yet another barrier to lack of transparency. Some of these demands have also been talked about in some of these board meetings, but they have not been addressed. In regards to the grand jury report, there was two grand jury reports as we, as we know, and it was for alleging the dysfunction of the school district, mismanagement of funds and lack of transparency. I know this board meeting is to take notes on what we, what we, the public endorses as their recommendations. I would like to personally endorse the recommendation that by January 1st, 2023, the SUSD Board of Trustees direct the superintendent to assess the current financial software to be compatible with the San Joaquin County Office of Education and that they comply. I would also like to thank Dr. Francie Baird for even having this town hall. However, I am disappointed that there is no public engagement and board communication, which I am disappointed about that. I also would like to know and let the public know that there is also some board members on here that are attacking minors and that this district is not even, is not even taking into account that their board members should not be handled in that way. And they are not even addressing that issue and they have not made a statement about it at all either, which I think is something that we should talk about and something you guys also should take notes on as well too. And that, I would also like to say though, that one of these Instagram pages is hired, was hired by this board. They were hired by this board and that they are, and they are board members that are taking pictures of these minors and sending it to that Instagram page, which is not, which should not happen at all as a board. Thank you for your time. Thank you for listening. And thank you for listening to my comment.
Please, Christina, next.
Next comment is from Harpreet Shima. Harpreet Shima.
All right.
Thank you, Christina.
All right. Thank you to the board for holding this town hall, although like others have said, we wish you had held more and that you would respond back and forth because this is honestly the first town hall where politicians are deciding to remain silent. So you could have called it just a, you know, feedback meeting then. So some of the members of this committee have run on an anti-charter platform. So I wanted, so I just want to ask, what exactly are you thinking about right now? Are you more worried about what people here are saying? Or are you more worried about what is being said on social media? Are you more worried about the future of our kids or your own political and personal futures? Seeing as we, you know, feds are now investigating. And I really do wonder what bothers you more? The grand jury report, which revealed how you're failing our kids and the kids in the city? Or are you more worried about the social media accounts that are reporting on you, your actions, your petty little vendettas behind the scenes? And you say that you're against charters, but it's your inability to govern and to manage the school district that is giving charters an in into this district. And it's your failures that may result in a county takeover of our school board, of our school district. And when the county comes in, that means we, as citizens, have no more say in how our school district is governed. Parents don't have a say, teachers don't have a say, unions don't have a say. You're putting the district in risk due to your own mismanagement, due to your own failures. We deserve leaders who put our kids first, who put the future of our kids first. We're more focused on making sure our kids are able to live up to their potential rather than what's happening here. We're more focused on what's happening online. We're more focused on fighting a bunch of young kids who are just trying to organize their school district, trying to get people to pay attention. And yeah, I hope people in November pay attention to the elections. And after November, I hope people continue paying attention because there are two of you who are not up for election. And while you may think you are safe in those seats for another two years, we're gonna try to make sure that that does not happen. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Back to you, Christina.
Next public comment is from Jackie Morales. Jackie Morales.
Hello. So I graduated from Chavez High School a couple of years ago and I attended a four-year university like right afterwards. My first half of the year there, I struggled to catch up with a lot of other students, which was really confusing to me because I went from being at the top of my class as Caesar Chavez to being like held behind at the university I was attending. So during college, I majored in sociology and I took a sociology of education class. And this class had about 200 students. And our professor had an activity for us that day. So they were like, okay, everyone look up your high school and see where they're rated. Chavez was rated at a three out of 10. Everyone else, about like 90% of the class, went to a school that was rated at least a seven and up. This was really embarrassing for me, being like one of like the only 10 students in a class of 200 to raise their hand and be like, yeah, my school was placed at three and under. And so what the grand jury report showed was that around 22% of students do not graduate, which is really unfortunate because in sociology, there's this term called social upward mobility. We are not giving that to our students here. We are not giving that to our students here. We are not letting them have the resources or getting them the resources to kind of like take a step towards their future and to be successful and all of that. And while San Juan County and Stockton is known for, you know, having a lot of warehouses and agriculture and kind of these type of jobs that don't really require a degree, it's like, I don't think this is what something like, some students in our district should settle for, you know? These students can get a salary job, like I did now, and unfortunately, the only reason that happened was because I had to pull myself up by my own bootstraps. But think about that, the students we're serving here in this district, we shouldn't have them depend on themselves. We need an administration, some leadership, the resources that can help these students, like, achieve their fullest potential, and we keep lying to them and telling them that unfortunately, there's a lot of things going on behind the scenes that just aren't helping these students, but overall, I think we can make the change to help these students in the future, and to give them opportunities to be successful and to achieve their dreams and to not feel like, oh, because I come from Stockton, specifically Stockton Unified School District, for university, a master's degree, PhD, whatever, is out of sight, out of mind. So I just want to encourage everyone to really just know we have a lot of power when the community gets together, and if we want to make a difference for our students, for our children, for our future children, it's time to take notice right now. And let's all fight for a change. So I hope you guys really make a difference and pay attention and listen, and yeah, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Back to you Christina.
Next public comment is from Elizabeth Ning Mayberry.
Good evening. I have three children. Stockton Unified School District. It's, in America, it's a terrifying time to have children in school. In Stockton, I don't even know terrifying is the right word to use. My children belong to one of four schools that are a part of the Stag neighborhood. My oldest son saw the police activity and had to Google what was happening. I don't know why he was out when it was happening. It's a terrifying time to try to participate in our democracy right now in Stockton. We're relying on young people, not relying on them, but following the, the lead of young people that are way braver than I ever was. And then I even feel in this moment, you all know that some people need to be fired. I'm not going to say any more than that. It's a terrifying time, I think, from what I've heard from friends who are teachers in this school district to express any kind of opinion to even be in this room. There are enough obstacles in life for our families, our children, our teachers, to show up to things like this. Just, just obstacles in capacity and scheduling and finances. Just, and the fact that we have to add on all the other obstacles that have been manufactured for us in the recent years. It's just, it's cra- it's crazy. Why? And it's not just like people having fun. I mean, I'm, I told you, I'm terrified. Children, a child's life was lost, children's lives are at stake. Just their lives. I'm not even talking about their learnings. So I'm up here, because I was also terrified that this meeting was going to end before someone in this room, who is far more prepared and eloquent than I am, would come and say the thing that would convince you all, would be the, you know, just that magic key that would say, would, would fix this, that would, would pierce your heart, str- you know, just move you to, to not invest thirty thousand dollars in an art class. You know, I just, I don't understand. I don't, I just don't understand. And maybe if you all could help me understand, help your families and your teachers understand, that would be great. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Back to you Christina.
Next public comment is from Natalie Cabrera.
I'm literally here, up here talking just the whole time. There's people that are not pressing yet, they're working. So yeah, basically, I'm here just to kill time, see who shows up. I know my sister works till six-thirty, so yeah.
Let it go. Go, and you're doing fine. That's great.
Oh, I know.
Don't want to waste our time, wasting your time as well.
Oh yeah, I'm wasting their time, so.
Yeah, you have a good lunch?
Yeah.
That's great.
Had a good day at work.
Good day at work, too, right?
Yeah.
Burged us a couple of hours today, went over to, went over to a new restaurant that I'd never been to, had a shake from there. It was really good. I, I really enjoyed myself. Yeah, I appreciate you taking the time to come up here and, and make this a valid meeting. You know, it's really sad that we have to sit here
Lisa, please.
To these people, they don't have to respond. You know, I, I value your time. You just have two minutes and thirteen seconds. And you're allowed.
Order, please, order. Yes, we're waiting for you.
Okay. Oh, I know. But I already said what I had to say, so I'm here standing, so people, if they need to show up, they have time to show up, because you guys wanted to join it early.
So. Great. You have the right to stand up there.
Oh, I know.
For sure. They only said we're allowed to put in one card, otherwise I'd put in seven or eight.
And I should have brought my whole family.
Order, please.
She was addressing me, Mr. Marquez.
Please.
He's addressing me, so.
You can talk to her.
Okay. All right, I know what I had to say. I just honestly think, you know, we spent a lot of money on you guys. Like, they brought up the whole seven hundred dollars. Oh, seven fifty for the conference. I just went to a conference, and we didn't get no seven hundred and fifty dollar hotel. Also, you know, the money you guys are getting, you guys are getting special meals. For what? You guys are already getting the stipend of seventy dollars a day. We took kids, we didn't get no money for them. We had to get it out of our pocket. Until this day, the district has not paid me back. I don't care, because they're my kids, but I'm not going to let a kid without eating, because, oh, they don't have money. So we really need to think how much money you guys are spending on yourselves and the money you guys are spending on the kids. Because I've seen board agendas where paperwork is turned in. It says, do not exceed a certain amount, but, oh, but you guys don't have, do not exceed. It just goes over all the time. And from what I read, if everything was correct, it said that we're going to provide a breakfast and a lunch, so why are we giving you guys breakfast and lunch money?
I'm sorry to interrupt, but I can't hear you, because there's people behind you talking, so I'm sorry.
I'm having a little hard time also. Can you get closer, please? Thank you.
Well, my time's almost up, so, kind of like, yeah. Thank you, have a good day. Thank you.
Back to you Christina.
Next public comment is from Kristen Horan. Kristen Horan.
Order, please, order, please. Thank you, ma'am. So I came here tonight just to see if you guys were gonna give us some transparency about what you plan on doing about fixing our district. And I think it's absolutely appalling that you were going to end this meeting fifteen minutes in. Because there were no more comments. You were not going to give the community the two hours that they had to come and ask questions if people showed up late, if people were coming from work, if they had children, they had to find childcare for. It was appalling that you made that decision, because I have a child that I had to find childcare for, so I could come here to see what was going on with the district that I work for, that I have children in. And if you show that little consideration about your community and them coming to speak to you, what consideration do you have for my child in my school? What consideration do you have for the employees that show up every single day to make sure these children are safe and are protected in their learning environment? And from what I've seen at the schools, and what you give us, what the facilities are and the equipment, you don't care at all, because the schools are falling apart. You have K-eight schools, the middle schoolers do not have facilities to play at. They have to work around everybody. There is nothing that works at any of these schools. All the middle schools are taken care of. They have two gyms at every single middle school, and you've got elementary schools like Hoover Elementary that doesn't even have a multipurpose room with a basketball hoop in it for the kids to play inside when it's raining. What are you guys gonna do to fix our facilities? Do you have any plan at all? It's appalling. You know, when I grew up, we went on field trips four times a year. My son, he is in fourth grade. He has been on two field trips with this school district. What are you gonna do to make sure these kids get out of this community once in a while and see what's out there? Because they're not. If they're stuck here their whole life, what do they have to aspire to get better? They have a board like this that doesn't care, and they don't show up, because why would they? They don't know that they're allowed to. Nobody's telling them, you should come, use your voice, and tell these people that you want a better education, because they think what they have is okay, and it's not okay. These schools need to be fixed, and they should have been fixed decades ago. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Next public comment is from Anne Baird. Anne Baird.
I've lived in Stockton since nineteen sixty-eight. Raised my family here. My husband and I have both worked here. Kids went to school here. Things are different now, apparently. The other day, I was talking to an acquaintance of mine, a businessman, and I said to him, as he was going on and on and on, about how upset he was with what Stockton Unified was doing and not doing. And I said, why do you care? You're a business guy. He said, Stockton Unified is the biggest school district in the county. The test scores are in the potty, the board is nuts. There's nothing that we can do about this at this point, and it's making me crazy. And I said, okay, I can work with that. So I enlisted myself to try to find some way to get this thing going and to fix it, because at the, at the bottom, at the bitter end of this, it's about the kids. It's not about any of us. It's not about us adults. It's not about people who don't do any work. It's not about people who cut off meetings after fifteen minutes. It's about the kids, and I would really like it if you could start focusing on that for a change. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next public comment is from Jessica Smith. Jessica Smith.
Hello. I wasn't gonna talk, actually, but considering that the time was about to expire for no reason, I decided to do it. So I'm a little nervous, so excuse me for the ums and the likes. I'm an educator here for Stockton Unified School District. I've actually returned from my leave of absence, because I was working on my masters. And coming back into the district, it's very disappointing to find out that we have two of these grand jury files. That doesn't look good. On top of that, before I even came back, before I even became an educator, while I was getting my credential program, I had expressed specifically that I wanted to work in this district, because, like all naive first-year teachers, I wanted to make a difference. I wanted to make a change, because I feel like this community deserves change. Deserves every resource, every equity, if you will, to be successful. Our students deserve that, to be successful. And it doesn't help when we don't give them the resources for them to be successful. Or the consideration, the attention, the care. Yeah. The students come first, and it doesn't really feel like that they do come first. And it really, really sucks, because most teachers stay for the students. A lot of teachers leave because of the adults. The adults are ruining it one hundred percent. And we need to work together, because it's really frustrating to hear that we have to come up with the solutions when we've already come up with the solutions. You guys just aren't listening to the solutions. I don't really know what else to say, so I'm just gonna chit chat up here for a minute. I'm really nervous, sorry. What are the solutions? I would hope that the solutions would be to listen to the teachers, because we're at the forefront. We are the forefront, the first line of defense for the, for the students. And we're also the first people to get shit on when things go wrong. So thank you. And the lowest pay, thank you, thank you. You know how hard it is to be a teacher, be a parent, be a counselor? We have to fit all these roles, things that are outside of our job description, but we still do it. Ooh, sorry. We still do it for the kids, because that should be the message that everything we do, anybody who works in the education field, should be doing it for the students, because they come first. And it's really disappointing that that message got lost somewhere. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Back to you Christina.
The next public comment is from Gustavo Gonzalez. Gustavo Gonzalez.
Hello, board. My name is Gustavo Gonzalez. I am a teacher at Edison High, and I'm an SUSD product. I saw a lot of good teachers at Edison that, when I was there as a student, that inspired me to wanna come back home, and they told me, get out of Stockton, but then come back and make a difference. And I took that message to heart. I went to a four-year university. I took the path that I think we would want many of our students to go on. And so I came back to Edison a few years ago, very excited to make a difference back in my hometown. But coming here, you know, I was concerned about the things that I heard about the revolving door, superintendents, things going on in the district. And confidence starts at the top. We want to feel like our leaders know what they're doing, that they're on top of their things, and I was very concerned last year when John Ramirez was hired as superintendent. In the midst of the pandemic, I don't believe there was a community search, there was input in that decision. And he has some good credentials, but a quick Google search would tell you that he had a very checkered past, and there are many issues there, and it made me wonder, why are we going with this person? What was the, really the process for finding the best person to lead our district? And then when the grand jury reports came out, the first one last summer, that described some difficulties in the district, the response was basically, well, that's just their opinion. And for teachers to feel like we're in this, we're in the right fight, you want to feel like the adults at the top care, that they're trying to make a difference, because we're working hard with our students to do that, and that really discouraged me. And I wonder in the future, as you try to look for the next permanent leader, for your next superintendent, will you be listening to the community? How will you be pulling in students and parents and teachers to bring in this decision? Because we can't keep going through this process over and over. It's important that you get people to hear, to listen. When this meeting was almost ended, like twenty minutes in, it just shows that, are we, are we really listening to the people around us? It's really important that we have this, like, for example, right now, is this meeting being streamed? How, if, if people can't work, or are working, or they can't be here to take care of the kids, how are parents able to access this? I don't believe there's a public stream for this meeting. And these are all little things that we can do to get more engagement in our district that I really hope that as we push forward, as maybe we turn a new page, that we start to get more teacher input, more student input, more parent input. And that's what I hope, because as I teach my kids now, and I tell them, you know, go to college, get ahead, sometimes I wonder, should I tell them to come back to Stockton, to come back and work in our schools as teachers? Recent events sometimes make me reconsider. So I hope that going forward, we have more events like this, and that you listen to the people in your community, truly. Thank you.
Back to you Christina.
The next public comment is from Mr. Lucas Long. Lucas Long.
Good evening, board. I was actually also a placeholder here. I wanted to ensure people could actually have their voices heard. Good evening Board. I was actually also a placeholder here. I wanted to ensure people could actually have their voices heard. Um, I don't have a ton to say. I doubt I'm gonna use my full three minutes, but I'd like to echo pretty much what everybody has said. Um, from a union standpoint, um, also very, very upset about the grand jury reports. Think we got a nice shout out on the El Concealed grievance that we're filing. But nevertheless, um, Ray, I mean, last board meeting, two board meetings ago, you talked about never-ending raises going to our employees. Um, with the cost of living going up, gas prices and the insane amount of money you are getting from the state. Um, it's really hurtful to our membership to see that people who are making barely above minimum wage can't get a raise and you're still calling it ongoing never-ending raises. That's something that I know that a lot of members that we shared that with are upset. We shared that on a new employee orientation. We got a lot of people to sign up for what we call the Victory Club. That's where we actually get to support or not support board members and their um, ongoing elections. A lot of people signed up when they heard about the ongoing raises and the never-ending raises comments. So um, I just want to thank you because you will be a great ally to CSEA right now. Um, we'll probably get a lot of people to sign up from you. Thanks.
Is from John Langdon. Mr. John Langdon.
Hi, um, yeah, my name is John and um, the lady that raised her whole family here, she talks about, you know, schools and fixing the condition and everybody looks for, see, I'm not a person, I've, and anybody's welcome to livestream this because it um, it should be livestreamed. Solutions. Children are off limits as the elderly. But I don't believe in assassinating people's character. So if you have solutions, go ahead and um, just get with it. So I'm just gonna go ahead and read this. Because um, behind the scenes, things are developing around the country. And um, a lot of schools, it's endless, school districts are implementing its NASA-based uh, design technology and it eliminates ninety-nine point nine percent of airborne SARS-CoV-2 virus. And it's FDA cleared. And there's very few people in this room that would even know what I'm talking about. Um, Major League Baseball, the Texas Rangers, many before professional sports organizations um, are involved in this. And um, it's endless, the science and the data on this, but I'm gonna read this one part two. Act of Pure Technologies announced that its air purifying technology in, inactivated, inactivated, over ninety-nine point nine percent of highly concentrated airborne SARS-CoV-2 virus in an enclosed setting in just one minute below detectable levels. Testing of the Act of Your, Act of Pure Technology was conducted by one of the world's top biosafety testing facilities, the University of Texas Medical Research, which primarily tests for the US Military and the Centers for Disease Control. And this product is FDA cleared. Now, isn't that interesting? And then I have um, about five school districts right here where Aurora Schools got two-hundred-and-ninety-two thousand in COVID funds. Boom. And one endorsement after the next. Um, so it's too much to try to capitalize and compartmentalize into three minutes, but your solution is right here. So um, people, see, I've never had a kid. I've been in the worst parts of the world. I've seen corruption all around the world. I've spent half my life in Bogota, Colombia. That's where my wife's from. They're Colombians. And her sisters, met a top lawyer in the government for five administrations. I've seen corruption everywhere. So I don't wanna go down that rabbit hole. We should just let the feds do what they gotta do, but you have a solution right here that will protect the children. Because if we don't have a united front and show that we're all working for one common denominator, one goal, and our, our kids don't see us. They, they just see this bickering and um, and parents going home and saying, I can't believe this happened and that happened.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you for your comment.
Next comment is from Sharon Jarvis. Sharon Jarvis.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening. Uh, my name is Sharon Jarvis. Like many of the people here, I was planning to listen. But when I saw that things were just gonna stop after a couple of speakers, I found that really outrageous. So what I have to say is that I have lived in Stockton for twenty years. I love Stockton. One of the things I really love about Stockton is the great diversity in this city. But one of the things I don't like about Stockton is that our educational standards are way too low. And you can't live a decent life on a minimum wage salary anymore. So we have to do something for our students so that they can go on to Delta, to a four-year college, to a trade school, and they need to graduate from high school. And right now, we're not giving them very much. I have listened to and been to many school board meetings. It is just absolutely awful. The bickering, the low level of criticism and negativity that goes on at the board meetings, it is appalling. That has gotta change and the grand jury report indicates that that has to change. And this school district is in great danger of being taken over by the state or the county. There should be a complete state audit of this school district. But another thing that I wanted to comment on is that, you know, we want to attract more businesses to Stockton. Well, when a business is coming, they took a, take a look at what the public schools are like. And if they have a better choice, that's probably where they're going to go because they will be able to get better employees. The future of our democracy lies in our children and they're being educated citizens. The future of our city and county lies in having people who are educated and can add things to our city and county. And with the current state of the board, that is not happening. I am personally glad that my children, I raised them in Sacramento and that they went to school in Sacramento. Because I cannot even imagine being a parent with children in this school district the way it's run. So I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Back to you Christina.
The next public comment is from Reverend Ernest Williams. Reverend Ernest Williams.
Afternoon. I hate I missed the first part of the meeting. And from what I heard coming in late, I almost didn't have a meeting. The other part is, I had an opportunity to serve in this community. Over twenty-five years, I worked for the city of Stockton. I went to school here. I graduated from here. I came back here from the military. And I had opportunities that I don't believe my grandchildren will have. And it was because not only did I get an education through the Unified School District, but I got a scholarship with the UOP, which is unusual for people of my color back in the seventies. They had a special program for us. But you know, I was thinking, sitting in here in this room, I spent twenty-five years coming in this room right here as a board member with WorkNet. We had a project. They came, a company came to this town. They bought a big warehouse out on Industrial Road. They needed over ten thousand people to go to work. So as WorkNet being a job finder, a job facilitator, we sent a lot of people out there. But you know what's really strange? Every last one of the persons that we sent out there got rejected. And the company from their HR department, they said, don't send us no more of these people. They can't do math, they can't spell, they can't do English, they can't even break down words. Said, don't send us no more people like that. And I thought, not being involved in the school district much anymore, uh, I had an opportunity to work for Stockton Unified too, as a truant officer. And it was a lot of stuff going on then, but we had a good school board. They cared about the kids. They made sure that our kids got educated. They made sure that they passed the test. But I don't know. I don't know what's going on with you guys. I haven't read the report. I haven't read the report yet, but I'm gonna read it. And from what I hear, they ain't got nothing good to say about y'all.
Thank you. Back to you Christina.
The next public comment is from Rebecca Secor. Rebecca. Rebecca Secor.
Hi, I'm a, I'm a retired teacher, taught thirty-five years. I have children and grandchildren. I've interacted with school boards for many, many years and my, my experience was always openness, friendliness, honest communication. And so I, my first interaction with the Stockton Unified School Board was after you, you voted to no longer fund a charter school. And it was shortly before school was gonna start and I could, I knew kids and parents involved and I went online to the Unified District uh, website to find out why. Um, everything pointed to what a good charter school it was. So I contacted my representative on the school board. And the answer I got was, I make it my policy to not explain my votes. And I answered back, I'm, I'm in your area. Aren't you supposed to answer to me? He said, the answer will be posted. It never was posted. I put out emails to the, every school board member hoping to hear back from at least one. Why is this charter school not being funded or the contract renewed? I got zero answers. Um, so that was a pretty big red flag for me. The, and the other thing that happens is that I follow um, GoFundMe a lot and do participate. I see Stockton Unified teachers who are having to GoFundMe for basic things. Food, snacks to feed their kindergarteners, pencils and papers. We have passed eleven bonds for Stockton Unified. Where is money going? If we can't even have basic supplies for the teachers? And my next question is, since I don't get answers from you, who should we ask? Please tell us. Thank you.
The next public comment is from Cynthia. Cynthia.
Hello, good afternoon. Um, my name is Cynthia. I am a SUSD parent. I would like to talk about a community that is usually pushed um, to the side. That is our special education students. Um, imagine going to work and it consists of getting yelled at, getting hit, bitten and changing diapers. Just to name a few things. You're waiting for more support from your district and nothing. As a parent, having an IEP meeting, sitting there by yourself, surrounded by all these people and literally fighting for your child's education rights. I have a daughter with Down Syndrome. I would like to express my feelings towards the Special Education Department. There is a lack of empathy or understanding towards parents and I'm sure to educators and paraprofessionals as well. But most importantly, to our students. I, as a mother, but feel I have failed my daughter in regards to education. I haven't spoken up enough, but I won't allow it anymore. My daughter was displaced in a different school site because there was no teacher hired for her class the first week. Today was her first day at a different site. She has regressed instead of progress, progressing. I allow her to be in a level one setting until finally someone heard my pleas to move her up. She has had substitutes over substitutes for the past two years and learned nothing. Her IEP meeting was not held until close to the end of the school year, all to the, all due to the lack of staff. I came here to suggest to hire more professionals, more qualified teachers, more qualified behavior specialists, SLPs, SLPAs. Their caseload is overwhelming as well. I could not, I, um, oh my gosh. For the ones that try their best, I am thankful for them, but they are tired. They need better pay and support to provide the best education possible for our children with special needs. Parents need the support. We are frustrated. We can't fill our children. I won't allow, allow it anymore. It's overwhelming. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next public speaker is Shamar Dacus. Shamar Dacus.
Yes, uh, I am Shamar Dacus, product of Stockton. And there are a few things, you know, that I've always wondered. And those are, why aren't we preparing our students for life after school or life after high school? Um, we have a lot of students who graduate high school and are forced into gangs and other organized crime relationships because the school systems have not prepared them. Um, as board members, you guys are supposed to be our bridge into our government. I graduated high school in twenty nineteen, not knowing how to file taxes or bill credit. I went to, I had a full ride scholarship to the United States Military Academy at West Point, located in West Point, New York. And I noticed a big educational gap while I was there. While being near the top of my class all throughout elementary school, junior high and high school, I struggled to catch up to the curriculum of the other students. While also struggling to adapt to change now being an adult in the real-world settings. I quickly learned how to file my own taxes, bill credit, and I stand before you. But we shouldn't wait until our children are eighteen, nineteen and twenty to teach the, to teach them these real-world applications. We have so many students that are either incarcerated or buried because they turn to gang violence when the school system failed them. So I ask, please treat our Stockton Unified School District students as you would treat your own. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comment. Back to you Christina.
Next public comment is from Jim Hanley. Jim Hanley.
Just have the board then?
I'll stand right there before.
Thank you for taking the time to listen to me. I wasn't gonna speak today. In fact, this is the first school board me never been to. I wouldn't be here except for my Jane here. My friend Jane dragged me to this, telling me that I need to be coming to these things. I'm, I'm a business owner. I was born and raised in Stockton. Started my own construction company in nineteen eighty and it's still in business. Done very many, quite a few of the buildings around here. My businesses offered me the opportunity to be able to give back to the community. And I've been on thirty to thirty-five different boards, commissions, trying to better Stockton. School boards for me was never high on my list. My kids went to, I went to Lincoln, my kids went to parochial schools. But that doesn't mean I don't know what's going on in Stockton. For the past decade or more, Stockton Unified School District has been a very disappointment to me as a resident of Stockton. And I say that when I look at the taxes that I pay on my properties and Prop thirteen is high on the list, but then there's six or seven that I have to pay for all the bonds that you guys need. And I willingly pay that. But now I hear there's two hundred and fifty million dollars that might be wrongly charged or wrongly expensed and it concerns me. When I come to my very first board meeting, that's a workshop. This is a workshop where you wanna hear us complain and you're gonna take it back. You're not gonna go and give us any feedback on that. You're not going to tell us what some of the things you're trying to do. As a board member, I usually come onto a board proud and I'm assuming that you individuals did that too at some point in your tenure on this board. I spend a lot of time trying to make the organization that I work for better. And it takes a lot of personal time for me and I try not to have prejudice or bias. But it's difficult to not read the Stockton record and flatly be embarrassed by what I see this board doing or the actions it takes. Now, all of it is not yours necessarily, but the buck stops with you. I'm, I, I really hope that you guys would have more impetus and more respect for yourself to try to fix the items. There's a multitude of issues here, grand jury stuff. Are you not embarrassed by that? For me, I, I go home and I wanna tell my children I've done good in everything I do, in the work that I do and the volunteerism that I do. I would hope that you could do the same, but it's difficult for me to see that that's happening. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Back to you Christina.
The next public comment is from Nawi. Nawi.
Hello, my name is Nawi. And we're in a time where we're in a teacher shortage. And in a time when teachers face the brunt of the negative experiences with students right now because of the pandemic and because of all the struggles in the world, it is a slap in the face to find out that there has been a misappropriation of the funds that have been funneled into the district. I, like many others in this room, went to Stockton Unified School District in my youth. I had teachers who changed my life. But there were cracks back then that they would talk about. So imagine how I felt when I graduated and I found out that most of my teachers had left the district. A district that they loved because of the students, but for nothing else. They didn't leave because, they didn't leave because of reasons that they, that they didn't leave because of the students. They left because of the administration. I had a teacher, a wonderful math teacher, who was forcibly retired. Now, as someone who works in the classroom, I'm there. I get to see what it means to be someone important in a child's education. But people like me, who care about these kids, genuinely cares about these kids, we're being pushed out. We're told that we're important, but the funds aren't going to us to support the classroom needs. And if they're not reaching us, then they're not reaching the kids. Dr. Miller told us the other day, she wants us to come to you with solutions. And these are my solutions that I can provide to you. First off, the air filtration systems, wherever they are, they need to be installed. Especially when our children here in Stockton, California, living in the San Joaquin Valley, one in six are likely to have asthma. When in comparison, the CDC states that one in ten children nationwide have asthma. They need to be provided opportunities to be safe in the classrooms that they are learning in. Secondly, we need to be providing them enrichment opportunities like proper facilities, field trips, so that they can learn outside of the classroom. We also need to support new teachers that are coming in and give them another reason to stay besides the kids. And lastly, also to go on with the air filtration systems, we need to make our school campuses more environmentally friendly so that we can support not only the needs of our community, but the needs of our children. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Back to you Christina.
Madam President, that concludes the public comments.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, does anybody else have a card? Very important that we have the cards. Thank you. To follow the process. Thank you.
Next public comment is from Charles Udees. Udees, Charles Udees.
I'd like to first begin by saying thank you to all the community members that have come out to express their opinions, express their needs to you all. I also wanna thank you for the opportunity to be able to express a lot of the needs that we have right now and holding the space. I've been taking notes throughout the night and I really have been beginning to take stock of some of the emotions that we're feeling in this room right now. Hearing anger, sadness, some confusion. And I'm, I wanna come up here in a space of empathy. Putting myself in your shoes and kind of feeling embarrassed by this. It's really embarrassing that we have a revolving door of superintendents. It's embarrassing that there is allegations of financial mismanagement, accusations of corruption or lack of transparency. You come into this space and you're hoping that that all gets addressed, but it's threatened to be cut short due to a lack of yellow cards up there. We had the space five thirty to seven thirty and it's still being threatened to be cut short. Fortunately, I had the pleasure to be an SUSD student. When my family first came to America, I went to San Joaquin Elementary. I received a great education there, met teachers, met friends that I still have to this day. I also became familiar with a couple of mottos, one being something that actually resembles my family in Nigeria. The only way to make it in Nigeria is to make it out of Nigeria, come to Stockton. The only way to make it in Stockton is to get out of Stockton. I also became really familiar with another motto, how to be at the USD or how to be SUSD. And it's, it becomes very paradoxical to hear that when you have two grand jury reports outlining recommendations of things that I thought were already being done. You have recommended, the recommendations here being cut short, being threatened to be cut short or like board meetings turning into WWE matches. As entertaining as that is, it really makes you feel for the students. So there is a shared responsibility from all of us to make this district better. For you all to look at what's been said in the grand jury report and to operationalize all of those recommendations. And for us to be able to share feedback and express our opinions and hold you all accountable in November if this isn't done. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comment. Back to you Christina.
The next public comment is from Tareem Khan. Tareem Khan.
So I made the mistake of forgetting my glasses today because I can't see your guys' reflections clearly and I can't see how scared you guys are. You tried canceling a meeting, the town hall in which we're supposed to voice our concerns? I mean, obviously it shows you don't care about us, but there's a part of me inside that makes me really happy because it shows that you guys are scared. You're scared of just listening to us? I mean, you're not even talking back to us. And you were scared to do that? FBI investigations, grand jury reports, mismanagement of funds. I know you guys are scared. And when you're caught, when you're harassing people from our organization, including minors, that's how I know for sure you're scared. And that makes me happy. No answer, right? Can't say none, right? Can't talk back to me? This isn't a real town hall. You can't even address me. What kind of town hall is this where you can't even listen to what I'm saying? What are you gonna do? Are you gonna specifically write back to each public comment to show that we've all been addressed? Or is it just gonna be a one-page press release? Just a little show up for the SUSD board to make it look like they've done something? There's only four of you here, three board members. Perhaps the superintendent for being here, she shouldn't even have to be here. All of you board members should be here. Why am I only talking to three of you? There's a lot of people in here that probably aren't even from your district and they can't voice their concerns because you're not their representative, because the rest of them are hiding. And the same way you guys tried to hide today by canceling the meeting. You and your buddies? Stop. Because for us, this is only the beginning. We're not scared of your attacks. We're not scared of your fake letters. The, Stockton's looking to the youth? That's depressing. You guys are asking us for solutions? That's your job. We elected you to find solutions for us and what have you done? You brought the FBI in. SUSD is gonna be overtaken by the county? Does that matter to you at all? No, it doesn't because you simply don't care about the students. It's all about photo ops. It's all about he said, she said. It's not about what really matters. Thirty-two seconds. Oh wait, oh wait for an answer. But I know I'm not gonna get one. It's not surprising to me at all that I'm not gonna get an answer. And I know when you guys write a release to this, there's not gonna be an answer to that either. And I know when we ask for another town hall, there's not gonna be an answer to that either. When we ask to meet the rest of our district representatives, there's not gonna be an answer. When we ask you to care about our students, there's not gonna be an answer. It's gonna be nothing but mismanagement. And you guys should be embarrassed of yourselves. One, for the fact that you can't even reply to me. That's an embarrassment. My solution, by the way, is to quit. Just quit since you can't do your jobs.
Back to you Christina.
The next public comment is from Jane Butterfield. Jane Butterfield.
I'm Jim's friend who suggested he come, come up here. Lifelong resident of Stockton. Proudly graduated from Stag High School, got the best education I could have ever gotten, love this community. And I'm so sad, so sad for what I see in the newspaper. And also just, I mean, what I see in the newspaper is appalling to me. The whole grand jury reports, you know, where there's smoke, there's fire. Or is it fire, there's smoke, smoke, there's fire. And you know, there's nothing that you can do for me at this point. We can tell you what, what we think, but we all know what's in those reports. And I don't think you would have responded to them a year ago in a timely manner before they had to come back again. So I think this meeting is nice and I certainly respect everybody that's here. I don't expect any answers, but I do, we'll make two comments. Number one, the Stockton Unified got two hundred and fifty million dollars, two hundred and fifty million dollars through the CARES Act when, when the COVID relief fund was received from the federal government. Two hundred and fifty million. When, when I heard that, when I heard that, I thought, God, this will be transformational for Stockton Unified. Transformational. I've not heard anything about it. I don't know where the money went. I have no idea how it's being spent. This community should demand a full accounting of exactly where that money's gone or hasn't gone. Have you spent it? I hear all these people talking about wanting air purifiers and all that. And my understanding is a lot of that stuff can be paid for through your two hundred and fifty million dollars. Two hundred and fifty million dollars. Where is it going and can we trust you to be spending it in the right manner? That's my first thing. My second thing is, several years ago, a report was issued and you all approved Resolution Number, I can't read it, eighteen oh five, entitled Ensuring College Career and Community Readiness for All Students. Great report, read it in detail. Just provided all sorts of information about every school and the different, you know, outcomes. And it was very sad, but the understanding I had was that it was all gonna be taken back and, and everybody was gonna be looking at it and making decisions to how do we improve things? And I'm wondering if that still happens, if you all go back every year and sit down and say, well, geez, we've fallen another five percent here. And so this is the plan. This is what we're gonna do and where are we short? And you know, how are we gonna get there and people should be held accountable? Are we doing that? Cause that's your job. That's your number one job. I mean, how do you explain where we are right now as a community? And you know, having the poor results that we're having, how, how, what are you doing to resolve that?
Thank you for your comment.
You're welcome.
Back to you Christina.
Next public comment is from Jewellian Johnson. Jewellian Johnson.
Need to look down good. I know you're not happy to see me. So for everyone who doesn't know, Jewellian Johnson, not an SUSD student, Delta alumni. My mom actually would not let me go to certain schools within the district because she wanted me put into better schools. So the life of a kid who doesn't have access to better education, let me tell you what that was like. I was waking up at four every morning to start my time getting on bus, then walking a mile so that I can get on BART, then walking another mile so that I could actually reach the school by eight o'clock. After school, I would take another bus back, doing same thing, basically three hours to get home. I'd be home by about seven o'clock and that would give me just enough time to try and get homework done before I go to school. This year, I had a cousin, eighteen years old, didn't even get to graduate, laid down on West Lane. One of the victims because of your inaction to be murdered before he could even walk the stage. I have another nephew who is in sixth grade but only reading at the third grade level because of product of your inaction. And if we wanna talk about grand jury reports, well, let's talk about what you voted on before. I don't have my phone on me right now because it's dead, but let's talk about the transparency resolution that was submitted by the community that highlighted saying that we wanted meetings to be seventy-two hours in advance, to be special meetings, to only be relegated to things that are absolutely necessary so that we would have transparency with the community. For the language that was being dedicated to have expansion on our website similar to San Francisco. Other districts have already taken the steps to actually do these things. Why are we not? But Ms. Mendez here had the absolute charity to vote no, twice, twice. Then Mr. Zulueta here to actually have the audacity to attack children who propose solutions to him. Children, minors, not even whole adults, minors. Now you have a large district of forty thousand students in the genocide that you contribute to these people not having job security later on in life. To not having actual health insurance later on in life, to not being able to provide for their own kids later on in life. That is on you. The decision to eliminate a coordinator who was supposedly be overseeing safety for this district eliminated. And then what do we have? Another murder on your hands. So honestly, I can't even top everything that everyone has said, but you should absolutely be embarrassed to be even sitting here looking at the community. Cause if I were you, I'd be gone before they even saw my name here tonight. And honestly, by the end of this, I guess, and by the end of the investigation, I'll be very happy because I know that at least by then you guys won't be able to do anything because you'll be too busy asking for bail. But thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comment.
Next public comment is from Gabriela Gonzalez. Gabriela Gonzalez.
Hello. So I was late to this meeting and disappointed to hear that it almost ended early. Can I say that I'm shocked though? Not at all. I never really listened to the board meetings until the first grand jury report. It was disheartening and quite shocking to hear how they were being run even after the first report. Centuries continued, listening to items with no positive action. Board meetings went on for a while without public comment. There was still no student representative. And if there was any bickering or quick shutdowns, it was because of any criticisms. When will you do right by the children? Will you lift them up instead of kicking them down? You are supposed to be leaders and do right by the students. Have you? I don't think so. That's all I got.
Thank you for your comment. Back to you Christina.
Madam President, I have no more public comment cards.
Did anybody have a comment and they wanna write in right now? I think it's coming, a young man over here. Are you coming? Thank you. Let's follow the process. Thank you.
Next public comment comes from Donald De Nair. Donald De Nair.
Hello. So I'm here. I have like a bunch of notes on my paper and I'm just gonna try my best to share what I have. And I hope more folks bring in more public comment cards. Because this meeting should last all the way till the last second of 7:30. So I'm a community organizer here in Stockton. I live in the district now. I did not go to a Stockton Unified school, but I love Stockton Unified. I love the students there. I love the community, the families who go there. I share that because, you know, I care a lot about education equity. I've been organizing for education equity since coming back from college. I had the privilege of going to UC San Diego and I studied ethnic studies. And when I learned about the history of Stockton, of Little Manila, of the Asian American activism here, I wanted to come back. And it's unfortunate that it took me to leave Stockton in order to learn about my community's history. There is also the fact that, you know, even though I went to a school in Lorda Unified, I was, you know, I was still living in Stockton. And I think I can say with confidence that my experience growing up in Lorda Unified School was also similar to Stockton Unified School students where they're also facing poverty, experiences of gun and gang violence, and also anti-LGBT sentiment. I identify as a queer and non-binary Filipino person. It's really scary to come out to you all here today because I couldn't do that in high school. I wanted to go to college to feel like, to feel safe enough to come out to myself, to my family. Again, it's unfortunate that I had to leave Stockton in order to find myself that way and to learn about ethnic studies. And find, you know, a curriculum and education that speaks to me and help me understand my own upbringing. I also want to share too that in coming back to Stockton, I want to become a teacher, but after, you know, learning about how dysfunctional it is, it's been really hard to find a way to, you know, actually, you know, sign up and continue on with that education to get to become a teacher here. I also have a lot of family members who purposely choose to, you know, go to different districts because of how dysfunctional Stockton Unified is. And, you know, after all these years of these reports, it's really a shame that, you know, the trustees, the board still has not found a way to, you know, turn this sinking ship around. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comment. Back to you Christina.
The next public comment is from Bianca Sanchez. Bianca Sanchez.
Hello, my name is Blanca Sanchez. I am a teacher at Modestum Elementary School, fourth grade. And I've been teaching for the past 10 years in this district. First off though, I have to say thank you to our youth. I don't know where David is and all his group. But thank you so much that our youth has taken action and have been able to be the voice that we as adults needed to be able to stand here today. It's sad that we have to have young adults that can come forward to be brave enough to voice their opinions, but thank you. I'm very nervous, by the way. I wasn't planning to come up here to talk to you guys, but when I heard someone, and I don't want to get emotional, but when I heard someone say how long I lost her life, it really struck me. Last year, even though I work at Modestuma, last year, one of my students, that was his cousin. And you have no idea how much that student suffered. Or how much he, you know, how much trauma he went through. I'm on the new side. If you know Modestuma, I'm not sure if you guys ever been to visit Modestuma. We have an old building and then we have the new building. I'm on a new building, which is really nice, right? Why though? What I don't understand is why the people who built that building didn't build it to protect the students or us as teachers? I don't understand that, especially after what happened with Lala and what's happened throughout this district. I mean, not just the killings, but just, you know, everything else, right? I have windows that are tinted. Unfortunately, if you stand on the outside of those windows, you can still see it. The windows are about this height. So the first windows are about this height and then they go a little higher. So they can see in, they can see where we're at. I have to put black construction paper because there is no money for no one to come out to our school site to put blinds or curtains or any of that. I've spoken to our principal. He spoke into, you know, the district, whoever he needs to speak to. I'm not quite sure who he spoke to. And nothing has been done. So I'm asking you, please help our schools be safer. Whatever it takes, please. Stop spending money on higher hotels or better hotels. Stop spending money on better food. If the conference gives you a hotel choice, choose that. Don't choose something better just because you want to, you know, better, whatever it is or whatever we say you guys want.
Thank you. Thank you so much for your comment.
Thank you. I apologize. I was a little nervous. Thank you for your, thank you.
The next public comment is from Mai Vang. Mai Vang.
Hi, everyone. So like a lot of folks today. This is actually my first meeting, first time I'm actually up here speaking. I wasn't thinking about coming here to speak, but after seeing everybody here today really encouraged me. So my family, we came to the United States in June 1993. I graduated from John F. Kennedy Elementary School, North Side Stockton, went to Daniel Webster, graduated from Chavez High School, went on to a four-year university too. I graduated from UC Berkeley. And I say this so proudly because when I graduated from my school, only two or three people from my, you know, my high school went to UC Berkeley. And I think like, I remember when I had told my counselor that I was planning to go to UC Berkeley, he actually kind of discouraged me from going. Because, and now that I reflect on it, he probably knew because the standards of our schools are not good, that they weren't gonna be able to support me. I went from the top three in my graduating class to the very bottom. And every single day when I was out in college, it was, I was just scared. I didn't want to tell my parents. I didn't want to tell anybody that I was failing in my classes, that I weren't doing well. And after I graduated, I went to work for nonprofit Sacramento. We worked on Sacramento. I worked at the Sacramento Youth there. They're doing an initiative right now to get funding for their students. And I keep hearing about this, $250 million. I hear about these props and these shit that we're, that we keep putting on to like our, our four school district. And I vote every year because I want our kids to have that. I'm a single person. I have no stake in here. But I have lots of nieces and nephews who are growing up in this good unified. And I love Stockton so much. You know, like every time we go out, everybody is always, when I tell them I come from Stockton, everyone gets scared. But I'm just like, why are you scared? There's nothing wrong with us. We're just the same thing as you, you know? And so one of the, one of the things I remember the most from my days in organizing is one of the organizers told me that good things, good policies, good laws come to Stockton today. Because the people who are running our, because the people who are running us, the board, our council members, everybody, no one cares. Everybody's in here for themselves. They come in and get out and take whatever they can. That's why we're in this deficit too. And, you know, I was just thinking about this, sitting over there. But I feel like some are from my alma mater, from Cedar Chavez, is a place to grow our home. But we can't freaking grow here. Our system is broken. Our home, the foundation, you guys, it's not there. It's never been there. I've been here for 10, 20 years and it's still the same thing. So next time, if there's silence, listen to the silence because that speaks louder than, than I think you can hear.
Thank you for your comment.
Next public comment is from Shirley Washington. Shirley Washington.
Thank you. My name is Shirley Washington. I am retired educator from Stockton Unified School District. I worked for Stockton Unified District for 35 years and so did my husband, Coach Charles Washington. We loved this district. We loved teaching. But now I'm very sad. My heart is very sad. My, my children are grown. They graduated from Stockton Unified School District. I have no grandchildren, but I still love children. And what we are doing to our children now is very, very disheartening. The COVID had a lot to do with it. We know that. We have a lot to make up for. But when this report came out, that was a slap in the face beside COVID. When I see these empty chairs in front, this is a slap in the face to Stockton Unified to me. Because we knew that this town hall was coming up. They should be here to hear this. Our community is hurting. Our, our students are hurting. Our parents are angry. So I know you can't say anything and maybe that's why the lawyer told you not to do it. But something should be said to soothe the wounds a little bit. We know that you can't say everything. We don't know what went on behind closed doors. Going back to your mission statement, it says our mission is to graduate every student college career and community ready. In doing so, we lift all youth out of circumstances of poverty and scarcity. Well, we're not doing so well. And I put me in there too, because I'm part of this community. Stockton has a lot going for it, but we have a lot of reputation of not doing well. Let's raise ourselves up out of this. And how we do that is through our children. And when our children shine, we shine. And we can do better. Now, I know that we have some that we need some positions that need to be filled. Let's make sure we get the best people that we can get for those. And we have, we have retired educators sitting here now in this building and outside that would be more than happy to, to help you out if needed. And because we had a good reputation, some of us here, who we were in it. So we're still, we're still interested. This is why we're here. And we want Stockton Unified to succeed. We want our children to succeed. And the young people, we're so glad, I'm so glad to hear you, your voices. Because you are the next generation coming up. And we want you to succeed. So I hope that you take heed to what was said today. I didn't mean to take, I did not mean to come up, but I had to. And Mrs. Miller, you have a hard job. This is your third day or so on the, as being the superintendent interim. So my, my blessings go to you and all the board because it is hard. And stop all of this other bickering and other stuff that's going on. It's embarrassing as adults. How can our children be your role models? Okay, I'm going. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Back to you Christina.
Madam President, there are no more cards.
Thank you. Does anybody else have another to follow the process? Anybody would like to sign in a card to follow the process? I would like to thank everybody who came in today. And thank you for signing in your cards and all of us were following the process. Thank you for your time and your cooperation. Let's work together to achieve our children's dreams. Thank you. This meeting is adjourned.